Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Office 192024 Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. We are all here, thank you, everyone. So, I believe the meeting agenda now stands as posted. I don't have any...
One change, I'd like to discuss workforce housing. Again, Jim.
Okay. You've received draft meeting, you've received the minutes. Draft meeting notes from Jim. Have you had a chance to look at them? Any comments, questions? During the on-line may have a motion to accept them.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Objection, so motion carries. You have draft, August 5th, minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, that make? There are none, we are here motion to accept the August 5th minutes.
Subway.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Substitution of motion carries. Any correspondence or announcements? Just a reminder that the meeting, the first meeting in September will be the Tuesday, after Labor Day, as opposed to Monday. We'll start this evening with new applications. The first up this evening is that of Michael West, 595 Route 308, site plan and special use permit to build a garage, carriage house, and workshop studio. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi.
Good.
My wife and I have a piece of land about two and a half miles out on Route 308. And we're looking to build an accessory structure. The lion's share of the building will be used as a carriage house for cars that we have. We have three collector cars and then our two daily drivers. But right now, we only have a two-car garage, so the collector cars are inside, everything else has to be outside. So, I want to build it as a proper garage to store and work on the old cars. And also, I have a business that I've been running for quite some time. I used to be a contractor, but I somewhat retired. And now, I build and restore electric guitars, I repair guitars for a lot of players. And I've been renting a shop in Kingston for the last 14 years in the Sherwood factory building. And the rent keeps going up, and commute every day, and the price of gas holds and everything else. So, I'd like to use a portion of this building for a home occupation business, as well as the carriage house. And yeah, this is, this is the property. It's kind of an unusual shape, as you can see. A little bit of local history. Harder Lane, that we live at the end of, used to be the main road in and out of Rhinebeck from the east. Back before they created a rock cut to level and straighten the main road, they created Route 308. And that created this unusual parcel. And so, that with our house, it was built in the 50s, came to a little under four acres. So, two, three years ago, I acquired about half an acre from my neighbor, Paul Madristo, so that I could build the structure up behind my house, rather than the southern parcel, where it would be visible from the road, it would be visible from all my neighbors who live on Harder Lane. So, where the structure will be placed, but behind the house, won't be visible from the road, it won't be visible from my neighbors. And going through the process right now with the zoning board appeals are going to vote on it on Wednesday night. And it looks like I'm going to get a variance for it to be a little larger than the law permits, and a little bit taller than the law permits. Because I really need the size. It'll be roughly the size of the two-car garage, larger than the zoning law. That's pretty much the overview.
Want to move to this one?
The elevations.
Elevations.
Yes, yes, that's it. It's a little unusual, as you can see, there's an oval part of it. I wanted it to be barn-like, originally drilled with a round silo structure on it. And then I realized I could cut down on the square footage a little bit by compressing it into an oval. And because I don't need the depth as much as I need the width on that part of the building. There is upstairs. Two rooms in the building I will use for my business. There's the downstairs room, that'll be a woodworking shop, where I have my woodworking tools set up. That's this part. And then right above that is a clean room, I'll try to keep dust free, where I'll do the repairs and set up some guitars. And then the oval room that's on the upper level, essentially, is going to be a library. Deborah and I have a lot of books, we have no place to really put them out on shelves in the house. It'll be a media room, I'll have all my DVDs and CDs, and Gretzel come over and help with the play music with me in that room, stuff like that. So, it's not part of the business, it's just those two rooms that we use for the guitars. And I think it came out, Gretchen might correct me, I think it came out that those two rooms are the equivalent of about 33% of the square footage of the building. And I think the law allows 25% of an accessory structure. So, the zoning board appeals will be giving me a variance for that also.
Jim?
Well, I have some renderings also, that I can look what the building will look like. I don't know if you have those loaded up on the computer. I was asked by the CBA to do some renderings of what it would look like, so I, if you have very... This is the side that'll be facing my house. There's a large ridge of rock there that used to define the road, back when the road went through where my backyard is. And so, this will be on the other side of the ridge. And it faces due south, so it'll be solar panels on that lower roof. And then the other side has the garage doors to get in and out of the car.
Couple, as I put in my memo, Michael, I think, has provided most of the details that we requested from the pre-conference meetings, and they're in pretty good shape there. The only minor comment I had on the plant itself is that we don't have a scale bar on there, usually like the scale bar says, you know, one inch equals 100, it's hard to tell, but that is, if we don't have it, the plant's got to be sized where it's created. I don't know, that's a huge deal. But typically, we do like to see that. But I didn't see any details on global search lighting, lighting that was potentially proposed, it was a note on the site plan, or any other lighting on the structure. And we do like those to be provided, you know, on the plan, so that we can show on your elevations where you have those. Usually, we have lighting on the sides of the doors, and if there's global search lighting, that will be shown on, you know, on the site plan. Oh, it's through dark spectrum plans. We'd like to see, you know, how some of those lights would be, in the dark spectrum plan, where those would be on the plan.
I mentioned on the application that, you're right, the architect didn't actually put them on the drawings, but there'll be absolute minimal lighting, just downlights at the doors, nothing up, nothing lighting the area around, I want to keep it, you know, dark and damp. And those lights will only be on when I actually need them.
So, as part of the application, I mean, really need to decide what you think you want to put there, and that's kind of put in on the spot, but we do require an actual cut of the light you want to use.
Okay.
In file, so just confirm that's dark spectrum plan. As I'm sure you remember, it wasn't that long ago, we did review this application from referral from the CBA, we responded, there were no significant planning, grab one of the concerns related to the variances. The cover letter did note, and this, I guess, is the bigger question I had, that there is the ridge of rock which you just mentioned, and separates the structure from the existing dwelling, and that grading and potentially retaining wall will be required, that also, in order that it's not yet known if, if there'll be any changes to grader topography, or any removal of rock. If we are talking about grading and topography, those do need to be shown on the plans. And if we're talking about the removal of rock, you definitely need to know any details on that. If you're looking at blasting, or mechanical removal, those are the kinds of things more likes to know about, we'd definitely like to make sure your neighbors will know about ahead of time. So, those are some of the details that we want to know.
I'm pretty confident that there won't be any blasting. My excavator came out when I cleared the site, and he pushed the trees over, so that they were uprooted, and then we saved and used pretty much all the trees, either for firewood or for construction lumber. And he did a test hole, and digging for the frost footage will be no problem. He gets through with his large excavator very easily. So, there'll be no blasting. And what he did is he cut away some of the slope and leveled the whole site already. Because I've wanted that to be as low as possible, so the base of the barn is almost exactly the same as the base of the house. So, it'll be level coming in and around. And what we're seeing here for the topography is the way the site was before that work was done, from the surveyor. So, truth is, it's pretty much all leveled, I can tell now.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the board, but typically, if you're talking about blasting or rock, we want to know any details on that, so. If anyone else has any thoughts on that, that's what we're requesting. Those are my comments.
Question to the planning board members?
Could you go back to the fourth point? What is happening in the L-shaped area?
That's all for automobiles. Auto storage and repair, the part of the top on the left, I hope to eventually have a lift put in there, which is why I have a higher seaweed in that part of the building than in the other part.
So, there's no upstairs on that part of the building?
No, not at all.
And is there any water in the building, or like bathroom, or anything?
No. No water, no subject, I'm just keeping it as simple as possible, short one for my house.
You will have electric or you going to have heating?
Yes, yeah, there'll be heating. I would love to have geothermal, and I've got, I've contacted people about pricing that out. I may end up having to just with a heat pump system, but I'll have some heating included.
And where would you project your...
On, there's a utility room on the lower level. It's a little blurry, but it says utility room. And so, the condenser, if I end up having a condenser, would be right on that wall on the exterior, so I can come directly into the utility room.
I guess you want to see that on the side.
I was wondering, how soon do you think you'll know which option you're going to select?
I can try to know for sure by the, your next meeting, if you want.
I think we would want to note more detail about the heating system.
Okay.
If we're going to have it on the exterior. Any other questions? Jim, have a draft.
Procedure resolution. Draft procedural resolution for the board's consideration. The application by Michael West for site plan and special use permit in Chapter 125, construction accessory structure, provide garage space, a home occupation workshop space, which is a class two home occupation. Workshop space and library, 595 Route 308, New Jersey 5 zoning district, accepting the application as supported documents added for review. Classifying proposed actions type 2 under seeker. We will schedule a public hearing for September 16th at 6:05. We will send this to the CAB for review, we'll send this to Dutchess County planning since it's a site plan, and we need two planning board members to go with this.
How about... Denise? Thank you. May I have a motion to accept draft procedural resolution, God bless you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, subvention of motion. Will you contribute a range of time?
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you, too.
Next up this evening is Emily Dyer, 5254 Morton Road, site plan and special use permit for landscaping, fencing, and sporting projects. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Ben Raffigan from Raffigan Landscaping. I'm representing new clients for this project that we're going to be hopefully doing.
All those in favor, if you might, if you can, by the facilities and all these...
Yeah, so, what we're looking to do is, the clients came to me, and they'd like to have a sports court in an area, a grassy area where they could play frisbee, soccer, you know, pickup football with their kids. As the existing property where the house is relatively close to the river, below, between the river and the house is a pool, the existing pool. And the rest of the yard is mostly, probably know, all the property towards the river is sort of like slopes gently down, maybe some areas not so gently towards the river. This particular area is really the only area that this project could go. It is technically in the proposed front yard, which we're going to go with the CBA on Wednesday before that, and a side lot offset. Part of that is, there's a tree, it's hard to see, it's blurred, but located between the sports court, and you see that break in the grade. There's a large oak tree there that we'd like to preserve, because there's not going to be a whole lot of shade in the immediate area. It's a nice, like, 24-inch caliper red oak, and I think it could provide some nice shade for that area. So, that's why we wanted to leave it where it's proposed, in regards to the saddle offset. And so, this area here is going to be fenced in, low fence, sort of a mock, you know, grassy field that's fenced in. And then this will be a sports court, court concrete, that will be finished with a sealer with the lines on it, everything there. And you can see there's a, the two-story frame building is, I think at one point, was sort of used like a guest house, but I don't know, like, how anyone looked at it, because it's not in great shape. But I think your clients down the road are going to fix that up. But this sort of provides a way down there to that area, and then continuing down to the, to the main house. Separately, you'll see in the planning plan, the clients didn't, they wanted to come down the driveway and not look at this. It's not going to be visible from the road, it's like some, around 800 feet off the road. But when you come down the existing gravel driveway, they just wanted to see plants and trees, so you want to be able to see it from their driveway, you'll be able to see that there's something there, but won't be able to see the actual sports court, or I don't, I don't think you'd be able to even see the fence. So, you'll see that there's like a three-tiered retaining wall, which will be field stone and mortar walls, with planting beds in between them. Separately, there's the lighting plan, which I put the cut sheets of those, the two lights that we would, different lights we would be using. And behind the highest wall will be a swale to divert any surface water, from offload, from loading the backs of those walls. So, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, a number of comments, a couple of questions from the board's thoughts tonight. First one is that I don't think we saw an actual detail of the sports court itself, what it's actually going to be, you know, some are going to stay in the raised, some are on the ground. I'm sure this one's going to be on the ground. I don't know if you have any, like, examples that you can show of what this is going to be, so the board can get an idea.
Like a visual? Okay. Yeah, I could picture a similar one, or a picture of, you know, if this is a typical one, it's constructed by a company, and just showing them what that, you know, what that's going to look like, so the board can have an idea of that. I think would be good. Just running through a couple of the other things, though the property isn't historic itself, there is an historic resource survey sheet detailing that it was formerly part of the Els... Elersley site, where tenant houses are thought to potentially exist. I think we talked in the pre-con, that Phase 1A and 1B is not necessarily necessary, but when they're doing construction, if anything does show up, when you're digging, you want to make sure, finding artifacts or anything like that, that you stop and contact the town. But also, leave it to the board to decide if you want to do or discuss the Phase 1A and 1B. I think a lot of the sites are a bit disturbed, if I'm not mistaken. Are there clarifications? Yes, yeah.
Like, regarding this, you did raise my curiosity a little bit when we were describing the condition of what you called maybe a pod or a guest house. Do you have any idea what?
So, the house, the outside is perfectly intact, it's got a metal roof, it's, I think, recently replaced. It's just sort of a weird, it's, whoever constructed it or renovated it at one point in time, there's like these walls that go up to like here, but the ceiling goes all the way, it's like 12-foot ceilings, I think, even, but there's these weird, like, almost cubicle, like, spaces. There's, it's not like a state of disrepair, it's just very strangely...
But you don't have an idea of the age?
I don't.
Personal access is likely to be for...
Yeah. It's in the shade, so it looks...
Well, you know, when you described it, I was linking that to the possibility that the tenant houses on the property, wondering if this was the remnants of a tenant house that was more modern than that, but probably not, for sure.
The ones that, I've visited this a few times, would be, for someone bought it. It was like an art studio or something, and there was like this little kitchenette that probably was removed or something, and that's why there was these walls, with like a bolted ceiling. It was definitely not historic.
Okay.
But it was like weathered, it was just like not really used much, kind of like musty and moisture and stuff.
Correct. I'm sorry, Jim.
So, just moving along, you know, as part of the construction of the sports court, you're going to be doing major excavation, associated engineering for retaining walls, I think that this plan should be submitted to CPL for review, for looking specifically at the structural retaining walls. That's beyond something I can do, that needs a structural review. I take a look at the grading and drainage elements that are related to it, because we are talking about 843 feet of retaining wall. It's a lot of retaining wall. I do think we need a structural review of that, to just be sure and certain that everything is working, and the slopes, and the water, location next to the river, within 1,000 feet of the Hudson River, which is why we're looking at special use permit on this proposal. We'll get to the pillars in a second, but you're proposing to install pillars as well?
Yeah, I thought I covered everything, but didn't quite cover it. Yeah, so, they wanted to have, they initially asked for a, their, their second homeowner, so their main residence is in Scarsdale, and they wanted driveway pillars. And I, in my experience, you know, we, we're landscape contractors, we come in driveways with trailers, people put their pillars, like, way too close to the road, and they either get hit by snow piles, or delivery trucks, and all that stuff. I had proposed putting them, I think they're a little over 100 feet off the road, so that we can eliminate that issue, and, but they just wanted something that sort of indicated on there, because their mailbox is sort of, I mean, we're, end up with this in the mailbox, but that's not really the deal. It's, it's hard to tell, people drive by, looking for the address, and they want it so to pull them in the driveway. I don't think it's indicated on here, but just have 52, a number right on the, on the pillar, and just have a nice entrance.
Lots.
Ah, yeah.
So, the pillars themselves are showing at 163 feet in from Morton Road, and they're on the bend here, so given, I haven't driven past there, looking specifically, there aren't a lot of trees down there, I don't imagine you can see that in Dupont.
Yeah, where that is, evidently, at one point, when they, wherever they put the original homeowner, whoever built the house, they just sort of built the driveway up. So, the driveway sits up pretty far, so the height of these is going to be partially buried from, I think it shows on the, yeah, it's just in the grave. So, really, the driveway's here, and the side of the driveway is probably all down here somewhere, down here, because it sort of drops off. And there's just lights on the inside, sort of to eliminate the driveway by that.
How big is the power share?
We'll just, we'll run kind of way, probably. On the, the left side of the driveways you come in, is where the existing underground electric comes in, so we'll go on the opposite side of the driveway with low voltage. Yeah.
Probably need to show that on the plans. Well, the details, I was going to get into one, showing a recessed light fixture, I'm not super concerned about it in terms of lighting, but I think we need a cut of that just to make sure.
That's the same, I gave you guys a copy, there was a, a undercap light and a pack light, these are those same undercap lights.
That should be noted, and then my other question, just the existing slash proposed rapid-drive surface, so I was just wondering if there's anything proposed to be done with the driveway itself? In terms of anything other than, you know, obviously...
I mean, we're going to put some fresh crushed stone on it when we're done.
The whole driveway?
Yeah. It's existing, like, bank run gravel, we were just going to put, like, crushed, or processed stone on it, because I imagine by the time this is done, it's going to be a little torn up.
All right, so I think that should be noted as well, as a note on the plans, that you're planning to, you know, put down stone on any driveway. So, I guess going back to the main part of this work, which was the sports court, these dark lines on the retaining walls, this is all proposed change in grading, showing the dark lines. The advocate is, you're up front, the CBA, probably on Wednesday, to secretly from the front, the side yard, setback requirements, the front yard, because this is in front of the principal structure, the side yard, because of the distance, this is your side yard setback here. When we were in the pre-conference meeting, I did voice some concern about the side yard setback variance, given the proximity to the adjacent property. Well, there isn't a house on the southern parcel at this time, and can't predict if it will ever be developed. If the house is constructed there in the future, I think these retaining walls are going to be integrating, change will be significantly closer to the adjacent property than it will be to the advocate's house. So, you know, we just heard some discussion about the advocates, you know, putting up trees and not looking at this when they come in, but any house that's built on this site is going to be looking, I think, right at that, given the way that, these sites are all very long and narrow, kind of coming in, and the setbacks that are required. So, I just wanted to mention that, you know, it is, you know, there's a significant amount of retaining wall in the setback area, and half the sports courts in the setback area. You know, there is this open area here, and this is all essentially been graded. I think, you know, it is a big discussion with the CBA, more maybe than us, I think the sports court could potentially be moved, I haven't been on the site, obviously, but I do think it is a lot of disturbance in the, in the setback area, I'm just raising it, it's just a thought that I have, this is the plan I'm just thinking about. Well, further into the site to reduce the variance, and hold a retaining wall.
So, just a note in regards to what you said, as far as it being visible, so, the existing landscape plan that you have doesn't show changes that the landscape architect is currently making, we wanted to add some larger trees, green giant overbodies, behind that last tier of retaining wall.
They're on the plan?
No, they're not, they're, it's currently getting changed, because she got me the existing plan kind of late, so I wanted to have the plan complete to you, but, you know, we're currently making the changes. So, along this back here, sort of in front... So, along this back here, sort of in front, um, the driveway side swale, closest to the retaining wall, we'll put, uh, some green giant herbivites there. So, they'll probably be about 10 feet tall when we plant them. I don't see, with those planted along with the other plantings, even if somebody built a house on the adjacent property, you wouldn't be able to see the sports court, the fence, really any part of it, unless they have drone.
Uh, have, has some work already taken place here?
Uh, so we had, on the property or like in this specific area?
Specific to this proposed advocate?
Yeah, so we had, uh, taken out some, I mean, you can see here, we had taken out some dead and diseased trees in this area, and there's a fair amount of brush in this area too, uh, that, that came out. And this, we were sort of unaware that the time of randomly required, special use permit for stone walls. This part here was existing, uh, and this part here was added, essentially. But, uh, yeah. And Brian had come out and, uh, based upon the complaint, issued us a, um, stop work order. I asked him if I could stabilize the site and plant erosion control C, so that there wasn't any more erosion, uh, from an open site. So, that's sort of why you see the grass there.
Um, so anyways, that, that's just a thought I put out there, you will be getting this as a referral from the ZBA, so it's just something to think about as we're doing it, and I think as you get the referral from them as well. So, special use permits required because we're within a thousand feet of the river, as well as the fact that we are putting in retaining walls that don't permit the passage of views, and they are, you know, above the grade, so that's, that's part of the special use permit as well. You had talked about saving, like, this tree here.
Yeah.
I noticed that there was a tree still in the middle of the, this area, or no? I'll just get all the trees up here and clear.
So, this, there's like some trees in here, uh, and there's a couple of trees. Now, I think they're all, they staked it the other day, the, the surveyor staked like the wall locations the other day, which gave me a pretty good idea of where exactly the extent of everything was based upon the walls. There's a few trees which are, I, it's submitted to correction, it's on a survey map, the trees that would be coming down, that are in the existing area.
I don't remember being a big one inside that sports court area, but.
It's, that's the one that we're trying to preserve.
Um, so now the other comments are, we need details on the fence, both of the, both fences that are in there for the sports court and for the fenced in play area, we need a cut sheet of the fences that are going to be submitted. And then I guess we have the details on the light fixture, it's the same, it's already on the plans. And then, um, details on what you're going to do with the driveway, if you're going to put stone down the entire driveway. I just think we need that as a note.
Okay.
Any work that's going to be proposed, tree plantings, changes to the driveway, I think that should be noted on the plans.
Is, if we didn't do anything with the driveway and just left it like as is, is that fine, or is it needed to be done?
It's okay.
It's okay.
And the owner.
Yeah.
I guess we would always recommend that if there's any chance that you're going to do it, get it down there, and if you decide after the fact that it was important, it's easier to take it away than you have to come back and add it.
Yeah. Okay.
It's a possibility, enables just analysis of trucks driving in, start wondering if there's additional work going on, and then it comes back to the town and then we're going to split, and then we get the man to come back.
Is that, I mean, normally if we were just doing that, just for my sake knowing, is that required to go to the planning board if you're just like adding stone to the driveway?
It's a determination of his own, maybe.
Okay.
But in this case, because it's part of a larger expansive project, you want to know every detail of it that you're going for.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just put it in the notes on there somewhere on the plan that, uh, you know, identify what stone is going to be put on the driveway.
Covering the fresh stone, I think, it's just a note on the plan so that it's known when, you know, post the building department, and if anyone asks the question, if you're going to plant on the driveway, you can say it was part of the plan, so the stone is going down.
Okay.
This site's a little bit easier than a thousand feet of Hudson River, if you're in another location, it might be a little different, but I have a thousand feet of Hudson River under those additional needs. Um, I think that's it.
Quiet, quiet members?
Can you go back to that photo?
That one? One of them all?
Down, down to the back.
I have two more.
Be careful, that's, uh, I don't know.
Oh, you can actually see in that picture there, the wall locations.
Yeah, so just curiosity, um, is, if we're looking at this, would the sports, the concrete court be towards the back?
Uh, yeah, in, like, behind this tree.
Yeah, and then the.
And then there's going to be sort of like a field that more or less runs this way.
Yeah, okay. It's, and the reason I was, I was just, um, the, on a building lot, but let's see, this is pretty dense woods, this seems to be behind that. I mean, I know we'll see that in the site visit, but it looks like pretty thick dense woods behind that.
There's almost like no vegetation underneath any of those trees, uh, because it's so dense. Like, there's no ground, there's no brush underneath it, there's like some ferns in areas that get a little of sun, but there's.
And I looked, that's kind of why I was trying to get my daggers in this photos. And that oak that we kind of see is almost as in the center, I would say, is the one that we're trying to preserve, or is it the one to the right?
This is the one that we're trying to preserve, uh, it's actually a little, it's not, it's a nice tree, but it's sort of, it was obviously growing towards the sun. And, uh, but a couple of these over here, this one's, I think, like 10 inches, this is about 18 inches. And the one we lost is about 20 inches. Those three trees would be, you know. And you can see on the topography, probably, this, like, beyond this, sort of at the far extent of like, for this wall in, third tier, if you will, it is, it, it's like a natural rock out cropping, which we're staying at the toe of that, we're not disturbing that. Uh, but it's a natural barrier, it's like, it probably, I'd have to look at the topography, but it, just by looking at it, it's at least 30 feet higher than anything that would be to look here.
Yeah, there's no concern from the road, it's just, I raised it because it is close to the property line over here, this is a very narrow lot, there's nothing there now.
Yeah.
This is a lot of retaining wall and a lot of, um, gradings can take place, so I mean, there's a lot of clearing. I think the trees down there generally are pretty tall, and a couple lots down there, just to run along your story.
Yeah.
So the only thought was if it can be moved, it's just something to discuss, I don't know if it can, because that's not the site.
Almost the lot, the empty lot.
Adjacent to it?
Uh, I, the clients actually just told me, that was the other day, they told me that, um, I believe Upstate Down bought it from the previous owner. They had offered it to these clients, but it's sort of like a very, it's a very difficult site to, uh, build on, it's really difficult. So, someone's going to have to spend a lot of money to build a house there if they want to do so. And they had offered it to the clients, and they said, oh, no one's going to build a house there, so they, no, the person's hand, no. Maybe they should have said this.
Are there any bernal pools on this property?
I'm sorry?
Are there any bernal pools on this property?
Uh, no, uh, I mean, there're possibly, there's a, like, the, if you come in the driveway, maybe like 200 feet in, there's this area down on the low left side of the property that I have not walked. Uh, that's like the only piece of the property I haven't walked through. But there's nothing located on, uh, Dutch County Parcel Access as far as wetlands, other than this tiny little blip to the right of the driveway. Uh, but, you know, walking around there, I didn't notice any, you know, areas that were collecting water.
Because that parcel to the south is low with bernal pools.
Oh, okay.
I have some comments. So, some clarification, now I'm realizing exactly which one is next door, which is 81 Martin. We didn't buy it, we're Upstate Down, we never bought it, we don't own it. But, this is what did happen, there was for sale by owner, and, uh, a good friend of my brother's made a contract with them, that he would maybe sell it as a developer if he found someone to buy it. They had like a, an agreement. Somebody who was interested in one of the menched properties called, um, and basically wanted that property, but didn't want to use my position as developer, turns out their agreement was over with the previous owner, and he bought it outright. Therefore, I have no idea who the buyer is and what his plans are with it. But it was, what I'm told, what I've heard, and I think the only reason our name got in it was because, whatever, we were friends with him, and so he's a client of ours who tried to originally buy it. But I think his intention is to build, that's what I get, that's what he was calling us, you know, trying to buy the house outright. I do have to just say it, because I'm looking at Landglide, I'm happy to pass it around, you know, the, the property that we're discussing, you have the accessory building, let's call it, and then there's another building, a small garage, that also has a living space on top. Which, I'm curious why they didn't just put it behind that one, which has a way bigger buffer before you get to, uh, 40, 52 Martin, or whatever it is, 40. Anyway, 40 Martin. You know, I, I don't know, if I look at this and you look at the scale of how thin the neighboring property is to this one, as you can see there, again, the natural topography could be the, the resolution, but it's very narrow, that lot.
And that's why I mentioned, I mean, we can't, as planners, we can't worry a whole lot about what may or may not happen in the future. We just have to look at what's in front of us, however, it is a very small lot, and I just wanted to raise the item, the idea that if it can be pushed and win, then there's, it weren't, I'm sorry, to the, to the site, uh, and there is less of the variance required, meaning the retaining wall and the clearing moves further into their property, I think it's something worth discussing. If it can be, I don't know, like, like I said, I don't want to decide that detail, but it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a lot of, uh, grading, you know, half the sports court in that, in that buffer.
So that, it, uh, in regards to what you had said, the area behind that, uh, back here, basically, behind the garage, I, I think upstairs right now is just empty, I don't know what they use it for, I think they plan, maybe they, one, they're putting like workout equipment in there or something. But that area is quite elevated, uh, and basically, when you walk up behind the garage to that area, you're looking directly at the neighbor's house, uh, which is sort of why, we had walked around quite, um, for a couple hours one day, just trying to find a spot that would work for this. And we had sort of selected this area because of the natural buffer of the hill, uh, and when you come down the driveway, if it's over here, that's like, would be all you would see. And in order to screen that, it's, it's sort of a much, the topography is a little easier there, but there's, sort of right here is a pretty large rock out dropping that is like right in the way of where a lot of the stuff would have to go, so.
Whoever owns the narrow property, they will get a notice, right, of this public hearing?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, this is, this is already, a lot has already been cleared, and obviously this work hasn't been done yet, but my guess would be this would begin before the house is built next door.
And are there any elevations in the retaining walls?
Yeah, it's, um, it's kind of hard to see, uh, if you zoom in, it should, it's just, there's like top of wall, bottom of wall.
What?
For, in, like, zoom in up here. Yeah, like, top of wall, 122, bottom of wall, 119, uh, so the top of the,
I think I have one more, we're on the grassy field, uh, wall, 114.
Uh, that's, that's the, oh, yeah, yeah, that's the, the lowest wall. Where's the highest wall? Yeah, 122, 119, so 122.
I understand what you're doing, but what I was actually asking about is what they're going to book like, in other words,
Oh.
Inside view of what this will look like.
Yeah, so it'll be a, uh, field stone mortar wall for the outside, you would really build solid mortar inside, and it'll have a blue stone, thermal blue stone cap on top of it.
And you were going to provide a photograph of what the court would actually look like?
Oh, yeah.
Could you also provide some sort of illustration or photograph of what these retaining walls look like?
Not a problem. So photos, lots of photos.
An ornament, you know, something to illustrate whether this is a mortar block. Or, I don't remember, there's a question?
No, I just wanted to mention again that that parcel to the south, we did a site visit there several years ago, and I forget who owned it at that time, trying to find the building lot, and there's so many bernal pools all over it. And when the DEC does their amphibian migration in the spring, that section of the road from when you leave Rhine Cliff to the top of the hill, a salamander is going every which way. They are literally all of the road, it's like going to vertical here, and going to vertical there, and here.
They're migrating.
Yes, yes.
Anybody else?
You said you've already done a significant amount of clearing for this project?
Uh, yeah, most of the clearing that we had done, uh, was diseased trees. This property, uh, had, I mean, I didn't count, but a few hundred, uh, hemlock trees that had bulli adelgi and had like blown over, looked like a tornado had come through this property. So over the winter of this past, past winter, we had gone through and taken all the stuff that was down in the ground and cleaned all that stuff up. This area was one of those areas, this area in particular had a lot of dead trees.
So you're talking about cleaning and clearing, not so much felling?
Yeah, there was, I, I mean, in full disclosure, there were two trees that we took down in this area, one you can see, uh, that were live, one just like a stump right here, uh, and that was, once we had cleared all those dead trees out that were on the ground and like hung up in other trees, this tree, a couple branches snapped off of it in one of those bad windstorms we had over winter, and nearly fell on the guest house. And me just trying to preserve the guest house, didn't take anything, put the tree down, so it didn't fall on the house.
What kind of tree was it?
It was a poplar tree.
And about what caliber?
Offhand, I would say around 16, 18, but, yeah.
Did you make any documentation of the trees that you've taken down already that have been felled?
Uh, not, I mean, I think I have, I might have photos somewhere, I don't know.
Well, it just seems like there's a lot of cutting involved in this project, it seems rather ambitious or setting.
Okay, understood.
And, and part of what we have to do is gauge the amount of impact. And if that impact has already taken place, then we don't really have a fair frame of comparison.
Understood.
Having some idea of what the, the four condition is.
Yeah, I'll see if I can dig through my phone and find any photos, uh, I don't, I have tens of thousands of those on my phone, so I can't really say over there.
Anyone else? I'm just wondering, the site plan, does it show the entire property? I've been zeroing in on the court area, but.
There's, so there's, there's a couple sheets, there's this one zeroing in on the main part of the property. That's the existing conditions, this does show the entire site, we had.
Yeah, there's some, something that shows all the existing, you know?
This one as well, it shows the entire site. So we do have them.
Okay.
There's literally nothing from here, all the way to here, except a few hundred trees.
You know, we do have a.
And it's often transformed boxes.
Anyone else? Jim, draft procedure of resolution?
Draft procedure resolution for the board's consideration from Emily Guyer, for site plan special use permit, to construct the sports court, grading and create a fenced play area, installation of retaining walls, installation of driveway loads in 52 to 54 Martin Road, in the HB20 zoning district, accepting the application supporting documents, adequate for further review by the planning board, classifying the action as type 2 under seeker. We will schedule a public hearing for September 16th at 6:05. We will send this to the CAB, the WAC for referral, we'll send it to county planning. We will send this to the C A B, the W A C for referral, we'll send it to county planning. I would have to leave it to you, as well, if you want to send it to H A P A C. I'm thinking no, but I did leave it in here, just in case you did. I don't know what the board's thoughts are.
Well, does H A P A C or specifically the archaeologists?
It could just be Ann.
I would refer to.
So we will, we will modify that to refer to Ann and H A P A C for archaeology. And we need two planning board members to do a second.
I will go.
I will go. All right, you have a draft procedural resolution, they have a motion accepted. So I will send it. Do you all have your favor?
Aye.
Vows, present your motion, uh, that will contribute to schedule a site visit.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, final new application this evening is that River Gate House, eight through twelve, T House, nine, Site Command and Special Use Permit, Site Building Improvement.
Uh, we, Mark Kaminsky here representing, uh, River Gate House LLC. I'm actually, uh, also in attendance for this project. This Kyle Plank, uh, the general contractor for the project. Jim, if you could go to, uh.
Yes.
Site plan drawings that I prepared, please. Probably this will, uh, and seals. That should, that should, great. Uh, so this property, uh, River Gate House LLC is, um, it's located at the northwest of the corner of, this is River Road. And this is T Court Green here, is the overall, um, location map. Uh, the total parcel size is five acres. It was created several years ago by subdivision. This particular, uh, property is in the, uh, H three twenty zoning district. And I provided, uh, in the zoning table to do the various setbacks required in the H three twenty zone. Located on the property, there's multiple structures that are located on the property. Once again, uh, this is sort of a road, here's T Court. Access is along T Court Lane through here. And, um, there are, as I, as I mentioned, there's multiple structures. So it starts here, right at the, uh, you know, southern corner of the property. This is the, this is the gatehouse, everybody's, along River Road. Um, as you, River Road here, this structure right here is the carriage house. Um, here's the greenhouse of, of the wood, uh, then this is the, um, attached, I think that's the, the work at this, right, work here, attached to it. And then back through here is the studio. I've listed, uh, you know, showing all, all the structures and I've provided setbacks, uh, you know, to, you know, to compare with the zoning code. You know, since this, this parcel was created prior to the new zoning, there are, uh, it does not meet all the, uh, the current, you know, the required setbacks for this zoning district. However, they're all pre-existing and, uh, this application makes no changes at all to any of the, any of the footprints or, uh, locations relative to the various setbacks. And so, uh, a little bit more information, there's actually this dash line right through here, uh, that actually continues along this way. This is actually, uh, the water main, also the village of Rhinebeck. So they have an easement that goes right through here, uh, right through the portion of the gatehouse. Uh, Kyle will be able to discuss this a little bit later, but it goes right through there and continues to the south. There's also a water main easement that goes this way and feeds the other, uh, the other structures that are, uh, that are located to the west, on the T Court property and also on the Gaster Court's property. Uh, that water main goes all the way to the Gaster Court's. It's connected to the, uh, village of Rhinebeck water, you know, water system. So it's on the central water system. On the site, I'm just basically going through existing conditions on the site now. So, you know, uh, you know, starting with the gatehouse, uh, there's a walkway through here, a driveway entrance through here, a carving through here, uh, there's a, a small shed, uh, that's, that's a little taken here. Uh, and then as you go, as we travel to the west, there's, uh, the carriage house, there's also a driveway entrance there. Uh, there's a, uh, seat that you get for a stormwater runoff through here. And then you go and there's also another driveway that goes through this way, right through here, that gets back into the art of the house and the greenhouse through here. Uh, you notice too, I also show the scallop areas are on the edge of the woods, um, you know, throughout the property, all through there. And then there's also, uh, right through here, there's carport and then there's a lane that goes through here. It's a, you know, existing, it's just a gravel driveway that goes through here and then goes back into this, this studio building located here. As I mentioned, also there's, uh, it's all, all, all structures are providing water supply to the, to the central water system from the village of Rhinebeck. Uh, there are individual septic, uh, for each one of the structures. Uh, you know, located here, uh, for the gatehouse, carriage house is located here. This is a septic system, uh, for the orchid house and then the septic system for the artist studio is, is located here. Um, in addition to, excuse me, in addition to that, um, I have, um, shown all other, uh, utilities that are difficult to see on this map, all, all utilities that are also sort of, also associated with the existing structures. So this proposal, uh, is actually, we're proposing to the planning board to do it in two phases for the property. And so, um, we're interested in making some changes to these three structures here. Uh, you know, for the, the, you know, for the purpose of the application, we wanted to, uh, not, uh, there's, there's no proposed changes, uh, for the actual gatehouse. You know, the client has, has recognized that the gatehouse is a, you know, very significant historic structure and, uh, that in any, you know, there are some changes that have been discussed, um, you know, pre-application meeting report, but it's such an important structure that it really warrants, you know, further investigation architecturally, structurally. And, um, so we'd like to set that aside at this time, the needles come back. So, like, so the, the proposal is phase one and phase two. So phase one is, is dealing with these structures and, and actually just wanting associated, uh, with the actual gatehouse, but architecturally maybe no changes to this and, and have the ability to come back at another time and to be able to, you know, discuss some changes of the structure. So with regard to site improvements, it's, it's, you know, fairly straightforward right now, just to provide, uh, you know, emergency power to all these structures. It's being proposed to be able to provide, uh, an emergency generator along with individual propane tank, uh, for each, each one of these. Jim, if you could go to shoot two, please. All right, so, um, you know, starting here, it's, um, you know, areas that are located, you know, behind the structures for, uh, you know, installation of the emergency, you know, to provide emergency power and, uh, and a propane tank, uh, for e, for each one of, all, all four of the structures. So here, 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 and also here. I'll, I'll also note at this time that, um, you know, obviously there's some disturbance associated with that installation. So as part of this, uh, prior to making this application, uh, the client engaged, uh, an archaeologist to, uh, obviously do a literature research of the entire property. And then there was also field testing in any areas that were going to be disturbed on the site. And then there were no areas that found with any significant, there were no significant findings in any of the areas that are associated with, as I mentioned, the emergency power. And then also, if you take a look at, see this, this solid dash line here, there's also going to be an improvement from just a single three inch conduit of, uh, communication between all the buildings. And so those are the only, uh, those are the only site disturbance, that's what it is, three year sec disturbance that associated with communication. In addition to that, finally, um, in, you know, consideration of, uh, emergency access to, to all the structures, obviously you can, uh, emergency access can be here, here, also through here, but getting back into through here, there's, that, this is a really constrictive way, uh, driveway entrance to, to get there. It would not allow for emergency vehicles. So this shaded area earth through here is proposed to, uh, it would, it would provide access from T Court Lane into this existing gravel driveway to get back, you know, you have multiple ways to get back into here, also to the rear earth here. So that's, um, that's, that's also, uh, part of the, you know, the site improvements or disturbance, uh, that's, that's, you know, uh, that's associated with the application. And then, um, finally, uh, I mentioned that there were some architectural changes, uh, that were being proposed, uh, for the structures and, uh, that's been, it's these three through here. So I think Kyle, uh, Kyle can speak to that. We also, you know, we, Josh Payne, um, you know, prepared drawings and some renderings of that, uh, he was, he was, he was, like, that outlined, uh, some of the changes that
Kyle, I'm, I'm moving to the next construction. Um, so right here we have the artist studio. That was sort of what was referred to before. So some of these names are old names from the previous owner or previous existent, like Oregon House, obviously, they don't plan on growing ours. So just, just some names we refer to that lot. So that's the, was, what was the art studio. So what you're seeing here is sort of what is existing. Um, and on the left is obviously existing, existing pictures, existing conditions. I think if you scroll down, Jim, you'll see some of the changes that we're basically proposing. Really, if you look at this existing structure, the siding is in bad shape, the windows are in bad shape, the roof is in bad shape. Uh, so really, we're looking to stabilize the structure, replace the windows that need to be, replace the siding. Um, there are some minor changes you'll note on here, some like, for instance, the brick, currently you have, you have arched windows here on top of this. Um, you have a window that goes on top of here. Uh, the brick currently goes up to here. So we're making some proposed changes, minimal proposed changes, uh, to some of the, a couple of the windows, um, a little bit of the brickwork, um, kind of cleaning up the siding. I think if you go back to the original, this, uh, this, this, this gable. We're changing the siding on this gable. Better work, the work is going to really climb right above there. So, so that, so just kind of clean, cleaning up the structure on the exterior, eliminating a couple of odd shaper views that we have, replacing the skylights. These are in bad, those are in bad shape. Part of this, I think Mark, I'm sure you noted this, but the current heating systems there are basically like hotel style heaters, so they're through the wall. So you're getting air, air conditioning, very inefficient and half of them don't even work anymore. So they, that will need to be updated. So I think the notion, the idea here is that we'll, we'll do air source heat pumps for this. So obviously all that, all those locations will be on the site name, I'm sure they are. As far as the interior views, at the moment, we have no plans of doing anything with the interior of this building. Believe it's just, again, those are some renderings of a few of the proposed changes. Any questions on the artist studio?
Yeah, what's the approximate date of construction for the?
Hold on, did you, did you look into that, Mark? There, there is a portion of the artist studio, I think, that was, that was older. I think for the most part, Stan did a lot of work over the years through the eighties, nineties. So most of this has been altered.
Cause I think I remember a point in time when that was a world, it was just knee hops and things got built onto it. So much of what you're looking at is from maybe the nineteen nineties?
That looks old.
You know, it's, it's in the archaeological, it's organized, I'll provide that information.
Hey, that'd be good.
I know that, that's very early, so we should, we should roll the structures.
So this was, so the greenhouse is attached, uh, to what we're referring to as the orchid house. And, and again, uh, you just kind of see it, you know, pictures obviously are quite small, but the roof is in bad shape, the windows are in bad shape, the siding is in bad shape. Uh, we're, we're, again, we're proposing to kind of clean things up a bit. Satellite dish goes, this, this pipe is no longer necessary. This kind of crazy configuration of windows over here, we're going to clean that up, um, removing these windows here, replacing the doors and that siding as well. So if you, Jim, if you scroll down, that kind of is a new rendering. So that gable is kind of massive windows. And you can kind of see the new front elevation, right to west elevation, and then that elevation. And then I think the next big, just really just trying to clean this structure up. And again, we have, at the moment, we have no plans for anything interior, no, no altering of the interior space.
I think that is the end. Any questions on the structure?
So I think, you know, we've, we've heard all the details that I kind of outlined in, I think, for phase one and phase two in my memo. Um, my view of this, I think I find the majority of the work is primarily related to historic preservation, consistency with neighborhood property character and visual impacts from River Road to Cedar Road. Um, we have the elevations, we have the conditions, pictures, some of the, everything you need to take a look at on the site visit. Uh, my only other comment was that the proposal of relocating the driveway to bypass the carport seems to make sense from emergency access and site accessibility perspective. Uh, if you look at where else it could have potentially gone, maybe coming off this driveway, there's a berm here that would make an obvious cut through the property, that you'd be able to see from River Road, make a big change, I think, to the property. So I, you know, I do understand the need for that. There's limited visibility from River Road to that proposal due to the location of the gatehouse, the stone wall that runs along the road and other existing conditions. So I didn't see any, any particular planning issues with it. Um, I think alternative locations might be more impactful, you know? That's probably my only comment, I think it's mostly on the site.
If I could add to the planning board, there's, uh, this section, very. There's, there's a white concrete, so in order to do this, you did it so only with one white concrete, that's it. What's the?
What's the distance from T Court Lane to the art house? Is it more than 300 feet?
There's an elevation generation. It's, yeah, it is, it's greater than 300 feet. That Westley property line, Greg, is 373 to the angle.
Okay.
Board members, questions?
You're not moving the carport, right? We're just putting in the driveway.
Just putting in the driveway.
And driveway, we're making it through the carport around.
Yes, but you're just in Kimball.
Right, it's just, it's, right, besides, it's just like an additional drive.
All right. Draft procedure resolution for the planning board's consideration tonight for River Gate House, for site plan and special use permit under capital chapter 125, for improvements to the Orkin House, artist studio, carriage house, including relocating the driveway to bypass existing carport on the carriage house at 8212 T House Lane in the HP20. Except the application supporting documents decided for the review, classified actions type 2 under seeker, scheduled the public hearing for September 16th and 17th. You will send us to the CAV for review, the WAC APAC, as well as planning plans as a site plan, and we'll do 200 for November 17th.
Okay. Now, a motion, someone, second, although it's a favor. That concludes the new applications for the senior board members. We'll be in touch. So I'm looking into the public hearing portion of the senior board members, Sharon, Zach, Fran, Marty, and Lo, the site plan review we can never clear until a fourth season. Do you want to give us a kind of an overview, we've seen it before, so.
We're going to finish off the slide.
Well, are you familiar with this application?
Yes.
Yes, that's already okay, now you've seen this, you understand the application. So Jim, did you have any comments?
No, just made a note that the planning board had agreed to waive the full site plan requirements except what was submitted as acceptable for review.
Site visit, who conducted the site visit?
Sean. We went this afternoon, and it would be good.
Oh, before the rain.
Yeah, and we, for various reasons, had not scheduled the site visit sooner, so our apologies for that. But you were kind enough to show us the site, and we were able to walk on the deck, which is taking advantage of a previously constructed roofed deck that had previously had just open bays with temporary screen fittings, fixtures that were put in there and wasn't recovered with plastic visqueen type material in the winter time to keep, keep the snow out. And the applicant has filled shirt knee wall, it's probably about 18, 19 inches.
Twenty-two, twenty-three inches long.
Right. And that leaves these, you know, nine by eight foot spaces that they want to fill with, with windows.
Yes.
And nothing is going to change about the footprint of the construction, and little is changing about the exterior appearance from what had been there, apart from the addition of these windows and doors.
Correct.
So we had a lengthy discussion about windows and doors, and you had some, some options that, like, they might work in conjunction with the existing house.
Do you have a copy of, we made a quick draw, did you?
Since this afternoon?
Yes.
No?
Yes. Okay, I have, okay, sure. So it would be a wooden screen, screen door, and then this would be double windows on that side, and the front and back would have a single window or glass, which would actually be a casement.
Right. Now, the house is oriented toward Violet Hill, and the entrance is on Burger Road. And there's a substantial fence that goes along, a pre-existing fence that goes along Violet Hill, and a lot of vegetation. So that elevation of the house is really concealed from the roadway.
Sean?
Yeah, the only thing to add is that they submitted a bunch of photos of doors options, and one of the options of the door would, that one particularly, the huge set option, would blend, but not, would look new, but would complement the existing front door of the house really well, because it has a kind of, without the glass on the top, it has a same-looking feel to the, I'm not a door expert, so I can't really speak to that eloquently. But anyways, the only thing to add is they did reassure of some footings that were maybe not so, done so well previously by the other builder, and that they were very open to just, to try and, to try and find the happy medium of the existing historic structure by putting, you know, some new, new features onto existing quarters of the, some of.
So really, the bulk of this project involves the introduction of doors and windows and walls and siding into what had previously been just an open space. And it does, what he's proposing, it seems to go with the massing of the house itself, and without going to too much effort to mimic the particular details, like we had a discussion about divided length windows, and because of the geometry of the spaces, it's, it's not going to work out right to get six over six sashes. And we discussed the possibility of options of casement versus the sliding windows, and I don't know where you landed on that. Want to go with the casement?
Casement, no. No grills.
And then, some of the time in the summer, it will be screened instead of glass, is that correct?
Well, it'll be windows, so it'll have a screen with it. So a casement window would swing out, and you would have the screen on your side. So it would be self-story. Then going down the side would be a double hall, and, you know, and then that would have the screen on the outside.
Is there any, the way that it interacts with the house itself on the interior, is any of that changing? Like the access point, interior doorway, I think all that's the same.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. It's the same.
Well, there's a side entrance.
Right.
I mean, like all the kitchen inside, the walls behind.
No, there's just an exterior, ignore that. Yeah, it's a little bit short.
Third moment of question, planning board. Well, is there anyone here for the public hearing, this is just an application. Here, may I have a motion to close the public hearing? Second? I'll ask the paper. Close extension. Do you have a, any draft approval resolution? Well, why don't I, if you're a lawyer, we can, we all have before us the draft approval resolution, reaffirming the proposed actions type 2, finding work is consistent with objectives and regulations, and, I don't know what my goal is. All right.
Take it.
I'll find the proposed work and intend it is to be consistent with capital chapter 125, authorizes the planning board chairs can't consign a one-site excitement on the applicant's satisfaction. Again, we authorize the town government officers and administrator to assure any required permits. And then, as we've been having lately, plans, sketches, and other materials, most natural materials provided. May I have a motion to accept, second? I'll ask the paper, I propose extension motion here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The second public hearing this evening is the county, Richard McElusso, owner of 16 Charles Street, approximately 18, 19 years, here with special use, site plan approval application, convert, leave the garage, to the, to the use for personal use. Studio, the house was probably built around 1890, I don't know when that was built, but after 1890. It's never been used as a garage, it has a changed roof, which is still there, it has wooden doors on the front, aren't changes. So I think if you use those too much, you'd have to replace those doors with garage doors. But the changes are there, they're still up, or, not a new car is ever during my time to do, and, the other, right, masters of fine art, garage, this is, has a own studio, it has no plumbing, it has no bathroom, then no water, it has all the good source of wood burning stove, there are no HVAC, electric, no other heat unless you burn wood, which we ended up to give it over. And, I think that's, basically, that is the structure, as I said, it's a same roof, which is self-story, and that's the people of the house.
Jim? No new comments since we met last, but again, I think this is primarily historic preservation aesthetic issue. The only item I would add is that last time the board did agree to waiver on full site plan submission, accepted the sheet that was submitted, and nothing is changing on the site, and support layout and talk. So we have updates.
Planning board members, any questions? Sharon and I did the site visit, and there really was not much to say here. We can say, you know, from the exterior, we have no idea that there was a studio inside, as we know. As we walked around the building, for best of our ability, it just looks as if it was the garage that was intended to be originally. We were blown away by this lovely landscape, it was just absolutely charming. So the best part of the site visit, seeing the landscape, that's done such a terrific job on that. It is exactly as, as presented, there's no improvements on the interior that will allow it to be used as an accessory dwelling unit of any kind. And we just, Sharon, if you want, offered, but I think I don't have a saw in the sheet at all. Just a nice little studio, she said the landscaping is, I'll be. Yeah, the only issue is getting out in the driveway, and thanks to someone helping us back out, it's a busy road.
You can do that with a lot of, yes.
Especially the ones you want to come in. So that's, really isn't, you can run through those pictures just to show people that really it's not changed. That's a good one, that one, because it's not just the hill going down, there's a path that goes back and forth like a trail. Absolutely lovely. Anybody, anyone in the public? Working in that, if you can see. No, you do not have a motion to close the public hearing. All those things. And Jim, has a approval, as I was sure.
Thank you all so much.
We're just going to go on, I don't want to stick around. We can change our minds at the last minute.
Yeah, draft approval resolution for the board's consideration, for your time, so for site plan special use permit, for conversion of the existing garage to personal use studio at 16 Charles Street within the RCO overlay, reaffirming the actions type 2 under seeker, respect the application for special use permit, finding work consistent with standard for special use permits, and granted special use permit condition on site plan approval. With respect to the application for site plan approval, finding the work consistent with chapter 125, approving the application, listening to materials under cover letter dated June 27th, 2024. Additionally, the planning board waves requirement for full site plan submission, is authorized in 12577F, accepts previously drafted site plan, useful parts of the buildings, and nothing on the site is changing. Authorize the planning board chairs to have to sign the full site site plan, satisfaction of those three conditions. We authorize city enforcement officer administrator, building inspector to issue required permits, and invite everyone, the materials spent for planning board must be the same as that submitted to city administrator and building inspector.
And a motion. So who, second? I'm voting for second. I really should have called the board, you can call the board, the right side, Sharon. Hi.
Side.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion here, good luck.
Thank you, Sean.
Very welcome. The first comment preparing for the senior board is for its 521 millimeter site plan special use permit.
So it's, update, update for board with regards to two approvals from the county, one from county DPW, and also one from the county health department. So I'm expecting a, a letter from, I've been in touch with DPW, the OOO, from Department of Public Works. I will, they have authorized reuse of a previously approved access, I'll have a letter, I should have that letter in the next few days, and the same plans, detailed plans with regard to, in this case, just sanitary, because there's an existing well on the property that was part of the previous approval on the health department. And I also expect those approved, I've gone through the initial review from data, I expect final plans within the first two weeks of September in regards to health department. So the question is to, once again, if the request is to close this public hearing, do you want to confirm that the public hearing is closed in 62 days? What's the timeline to, to submit those other approvals to?
I'm ordering to make a decision. I'm hoping it's 62 days.
Right, so if we request the, so the public hearing to be closed, I have, what's the timeframe I have? I, I think I'll have a health department approval in like two to three weeks.
So you close the public hearing, the schedule continuing, or the schedule for the next week, will you continue the public hearing, just?
Yes, please.
I will also say one thing, I know that there was a request from the planning board to close out the previous building permit. We did submit a letter from the engineer, and he spoke with Ed, and he was very excited to close out that building, so that's all taken care of. I know we did get the letter, I may have just related that, the letter for the foundation was submitted by the engineer, and I'll check that one. That was one of the three others remaining for.
So we have a hearing if we vote to close the public hearing this evening, I think it's going to be coming back for the next meeting, hopefully with the final approvals. So everybody, okay, Jen, all right.
Yeah, I don't know if the board likes it.
All right, may I have a moment? All right, may I have a motion to close the public hearing? So what, second motion, second, all those, favor?
I agree.
So Jim, what would the motion be, and we want to?
Close the public hearing, the schedule, decision, more before, registered, so to say, but I just...
16, September 16.
Yeah, five, that's fine.
Well, yes.
It was 10%.
Okay, I have motion. So, second, all those, favor?
Hi.
All right, go. Uh, the last scheduled public hearing decision was set on September 1st, January 1st, but they are due to waiting for health.
I'll also have health department approval next meeting for, for, for later.
Okay, okay, but they have asked to be continued, okay, so we have a motion to continue, this one would not void the public hearing, so we're continuing the public hearing to 16 September, so again, all those, favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Goodbye, public.
Thank you, Bernie.
Good evening. Jim has asked, as you recall, the committee meeting, to have a brief discussion of workforce housing. I believe you're over your, um, the, this...
Well, returning to the planning board, yes, it's never gone away, it's been in front of the town board, for a while they have been discussing this, on office meetings for quite a while, and right at the point now, I was involved in a meeting, a day of discussion, I should say, the town board is now looking to move forward to undertake the seeker review. The seeker review on this is type one, so it requires a full environmental review, typically this is something the planning board would do under your review, but the way this process is set up, it's being done by the town board. So at this point in time, I just thought it was important to let you know that we are at the point of seeker review on this project. I wanted to ask, you know, it's something tonight, but maybe by the next meeting in two weeks, let me know if you have any thoughts, email them to me, and then we can have a discussion about those, maybe in two weeks, about whether or not the planning board would like to send any comments on the town board. Obviously, you're always welcome to send something on to them individually, as a resident, but if the board would like to send anything on, I think now is the time to do that. My hope is that any, I guess, sort of moderate to significant issues, if you look at seeker, remember with the type one, looking at whether or not there are small impacts or moderate to large impacts may occur, if you think there are moderate to large impacts that may occur that would require some type of change or anything else like that to the plans, I think it's important that we discuss those with the town board now. If we don't, this gets back to the planning board, a little site plan review, and say, if we decide we need to change, we need to move a building, or change a footprint or something, I think that, I can say this for sure, but I think it would kind of start the cycle all over again, or even go back to the town board, they would have to discuss it, they would have to go back to your seeker, then it would come back to you again, so I'd really like to try and make sure we're kind of, so we're having all on the same page with the major issues and the major impacts, just letting the town board know what they are, we'll go through the seeker so that when it does come to planning board, we're looking at this specifically to see if it meets the site plan requirements, so this is the code. A little bit awkward, kind of setup compared to what we used to do, we usually do, like, I'm confident.
Are we in possession of most up-to-date plans for the, because they don't really have an application in right now, right?
They do, they have, there's some application before the board, so if you go to, so they're behind us, can we get them?
The town board?
Yes.
Not the board, yes.
Yes, right, because they're the lead agency.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, so, so we got it all this referral, it is, town board is the lead agency, absolutely, and then here, if you go to workforce housing proposal, everything has been posted, this is the most recent material that's been submitted, so their EAF has been submitted, some comments have been submitted, the updated site plan, the biodiversity assessment, visual assessment, have all been provided, these were more recent, these came in in less than a month and a half or so, I guess. So maybe, you know, if you can take a look at it and let us know if you have any major thoughts.
Is this reset up here, are you, like, this? I believe this, so, I, maybe drop off the town board, show anyone who wants, Brett, I would ask, maybe Gretchen to check tomorrow, if that's the most recent hard copies of middle, maybe you could take one downstairs, and the planning board members don't want to go through that and want to come in and look at them.
Well, I'd leave them up here just because there's more space, but then you just want to check with Sarah.
The only, the only thing I want to be cautious about is that they're here now, that doesn't mean that they're going to stay there.
I'll tell Sarah.
They might, you know, just let everybody know, if that's fine and they're staying here, probably they should, I mean, the reason I was going in that direction, if they're downstairs, they can come down and work directly with you. If they're here, they might need to check in with Sarah or somebody else up here, so.
Which is what they're on, check with them, because that's Jones stuff.
All right, talk to Gretchen.
So we'll find out, comes that.
Gretchen will find out and let us know if these indeed are the latest hard copies, and perfectly free to do that, but if you, we'd like to look at them, take one carefully if they're here.
Jim, when did you say your comments, like, before this?
Well, I don't know exactly when the town board is going to schedule the seeker discussion, the initial seeker discussion, certainly not going to happen in one meeting, as we know, these type ones take a couple, but, you know, we can at least have a preliminary conversation in two weeks, and if we have to go another two, I think that's fine, I don't think the board is going to do anything in the next 60 days, they have, in the next 30 days, they have asked the applicant for some additional material, some clarification on some items like phasing and material that's being removed and things like that, but for the most part, everything, the town board and the consultants feel need to be submitted has been submitted, and everything here is green, the most recent decision.
This is also on their next agenda?
I don't know when it's on the board's agenda next, there, they, there's been a discussion that we're looking to move forward with the seeker review, so I want to bring that to the board's attention, so you're aware of that.
Thank you.
I need to go through them in detail, I haven't done this since the most recent submission, it hasn't been a major change. I'm looking at these, the town board has also hired an engineer, the table is, is not CPL, you can see how CPL is the applicant's engineer, so they're conflicted out, so the town board did hire their engineer, who's taking a very deep dive on this from the engineering side of things. I have looked at it in the past, but I haven't done a lot of this, this most recent stuff. I don't think it's changed a whole lot. Building layout's changed a little bit, the head review is, it's been the same types of units, all of them generally stay the same, there have been some changes based on past discussions.
There you go.
Two weeks of talking in, you can see where it's at.
I'm sure you'd like to offer a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Okay, second. All those, favor?